Back in college.
Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on May 17th, 10:00 a.m. Commissioners' courtroom in County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on agenda is the amplification and pledge allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag. Commissioner Ford will lead those.
Please pray with me. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to be able to do the good work of Brazos County. We ask, Lord, that you look over our brothers and sisters in Ukraine. It's so challenging to watch how fragile our freedoms can be. We ask you, Lord, that you look over our first responders, our military, and our educators as they go about their daily work. As we do the business of the county today, Lord, we ask that you remind us that it's your will and not just our own will that needs to be done. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns, and we've got some that wanted to speak. So I'll just start with Roger Durden.
Judge Peters, Commissioners, my name is Roger Durden. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you today. I live in Saddle Creek neighborhood, and I currently serve on HOA's communications team, and my full-time job is a local consulting engineer. I'm here to discuss with you an existing county road known as ING Stausland Straub located in Precinct One. This portion of the roadway I'm going to speak to is West Welburn Road and the U.P. tracks, and it runs south from the end of Greens Prairie Road down to the Saddle Creek neighborhood. For the last three years, I've traveled this roadway to commute to work, run errands, attend events in town, and to go to church on Sundays. The roadway has some tricky geometry to navigate. The pavement is showing signs of falling into disrepair. The majority of the facility has no striping, and with the increased amount of traffic, both residential and commercial, that the travel on this roadway today, I believe it is imperative that the planned improvements for this road be implemented as soon as possible. I appreciate you taking this time to listen to me today, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Roger. Next is Sherri Harris.
Thank you, Judge Peters and Commissioners Court, for giving me the opportunity. I'm also a resident, ironically, of Saddle Creek, and this speaks to the level of concern that we have in that part of the county regarding the safety of the road. I'm coming to you from a perspective of a grandmother, former educator, mom, and I wanted to just share two brief personal experiences that I've had along that road recently because of all the increased traffic and the uneven grading of the road and no side stripe, no middle stripe. I stopped about three months back to render aid to a motorcyclist who had hit some of the uneven pavement and loose gravel, and he was a middle-aged man going to get medicine at Walmart, so he wasn't hot-dogging or anything, and he just slid on his motorcycle into a front yard and was pretty badly scraped up and bruised and stunned. And that really got my attention, because I knew it was dangerous, but seeing somebody suffering and seeing the danger firsthand like that really got my attention and got me to come and speak, because this is not my idea of funding to do. The other incident regards my grandchildren. My son-in-law was coming to our home from Castle Gate Two and was coming around the curve, and it was daylight, and it's even more distressing at night. But daylight hours, he knew to go the speed limit and to watch for other incoming traffic, fortunately, because another woman coming at him was up on two wheels going around that curve, and had he not been going slowly, it could have been my grandchildren involved in an accident. So I'm coming to you from a very emotional aspect of the road and a very firsthand experience. I also worry, as an educator, about children who might be going to school on their bikes or even walking to a friend's house and it's outside of the subdivision. We have multiple subdivisions out there now, so the kids are out and about more, going to see their friends and things. It's extremely dangerous. And as a, hate to admit it, but a nearly senior citizen, nighttime is treacherous even for those of us that are very familiar with the road. As you're coming around the curve that was promised to have been straightened out seven years ago when they fixed the crossing, the light at the storage facility is blaring at you like a truck's headlight on bright, so it's very difficult, even if you're familiar with the terrain, to navigate that curve. And I just worry about parents of residents that might be coming, or grandparents that might be coming to visit the grandkids at night and don't know or are not familiar with the terrain. We have a wedding venue around the corner that also has multiple 350 capacity guests, and there's people coming down that road after a cocktail or two or three at night going home. It's just, in my opinion, a disaster waiting to happen. So I wanted to give it to you from a grandma, mom, and teacher perspective. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Fontaine.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Susan Fontaine, and my past profession was that of insurance underwriting management. And I'm going to really speak to Saddle Creek issues from a statistician and an analyst's perspective. The numbers have grown tremendously out there. So with the new subdivision, Saddle Creek has 228 home sites. Winding Creek, a brand-new one, has 84 home sites. Ashland Reserve has six home sites. Millstone has 27 home sites. Altogether, there's 345 new acreage home sites in that part of the county. Most of those houses have at least two cars using for commuting up and down that road multiple times. As Sherri mentioned, there's also a lot of children. Many of those children are teenagers. They have cars. This is extremely dangerous. In addition to the wedding venue with the nighttime events, there's also another commercial venue, which is the baseball facility. Again, there are children going to classes and camps in that facility. Parents are dropping them off. Parents are picking them up. They are running out to the street to get in the car with their parents. We cannot emphasize enough how concerned we are with the danger. So thank you very much for your time and listening to our concerns. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Condon.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners, audience, everybody listening online. I want to thank the Commissioners' Court, because you do do the good work of Brazos County. Obviously, you've heard a lot about the appraisal values going up. I'm sure, and you can't reply to me, but I'm sure y'all would like me to just remind folks, the Commissioners' Court does not set the appraisal values for your property. They do set the tax rate. Your county taxes are about 25% of your residential home bill. They come to an agreement and set a tax rate. Very well aware of what it's like to sit in that chair and come up with that. As you're aware, on May 7th, there was a statewide property tax exemption where the school district's property tax exemption went from $25,000 to $40,000 with about 85% of the folks voting for that. Interestingly, though, I discovered the Texas Tax Code also has a provision that states any taxing unit, including city or county, have the option to decide locally to offer separate residential homestead exemptions up to 20% of the appraisal value, but not less than $5,000. That's Texas Tax Code 1113. The only reason I'm here today is to tell you thank you for your service, and as you prepare for this annual budget, to just look at this, have Bruce look into it, just take a look and see if that's applicable, something that you can use as another tool in the toolbox to fight the taxes that I know you all want to fight for our residents here in Brazos County. This is something currently the county does have, a property tax exemption for those over 65, but we have not yet exercised this other option of up to a 20% appraised value property tax exemption. Certainly, we'd have to have caution there. You'd still need to be able to pay the bills, have a sheriff's department jail, road and bridge, all the things that a county spends money on, the legal system, everything that we do, courts. But this is just yet another way that we maybe can give immediate relief to our taxpayers for these incredible appraised values that they're looking at. I know it can only go up 10% on the tax bill every year for appraisal value, but if you've got an appraisal that went up 30%, you probably are looking at the next three years as probably big increases. We still need to be able to afford to live in Brazos County, the blessed county in Texas. I appreciate y'all looking into this and maybe adopting something in this year's budget to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Mike Southern.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. I'm here to talk about the taxes too and different options that you may have, and this tax system is so complicated, it reminds me of a story about how you try to understand things. And the lion is walking through the jungle, and he comes upon some monkeys and a giraffe, and he raises up on his hind legs and he says, "Rrgh!" Who's the biggest, baddest animal in the forest? And so they say, "Oh, you are, you are, Mr. Lion." So he walks on down the road and encounters an elephant. The elephant in the room is a taxes. So he does the same thing, raises his front paws up and says, "Rrgh!", who's the baddest animal in the forest? And so the elephant takes his trunk, whacks the lion on the head, and knocks him down the road. And so the lion shakes the dust off him, crawls back up to where the elephant was, and he says, "Hey, buddy, if you didn't understand the question, you don't have to act like that. So, you know, we don't want to act bad, but the taxes are just as fierce as that elephant." So I'm here on my own accord, and nobody, not even my wife, has helped me do this. So I know there's a proposal that was just presented about the homestead exemption, and I thought, man, that's wonderful, because I paid almost as much in taxes on my house as it's worth, you know, as it was worth then in '84. So I think that's great. And so then there's another option about reducing the tax rate. So I got to thinking about the homestead exemption, and number one, only about 10% of the people in the county would be affected by it. And number two, I'm thinking, the judge is a smart guy. He's been up there 10 years. If this was a good deal, because it's been in effect since 1980, he'd have probably already jumped on it. He'd have probably already done something about it. And then the other one is the states tried to help us too. They've, in what, '19, they passed a law that the tax rate could be no higher than 3.5%. However, there are so many options to get around that, that it's really ineffective. And so I asked about, asked the City of Bryan how they calculate the tax rate, because I didn't see a 3.5% there, and the exception was they've declared an emergency, so they can go beyond 3.5. And so can you too. I think y'all did the same thing. And so I asked for the calculations, and it's 15 pages of calculations. That's how complicated it is. And so then I asked about the explanation. They sent me another 15 pages from the state on how you understand what's going on. So I looked at the signature on that, how you calculate the tax rate, and there's only one person on there. There's only one person brave enough to do that, Ms. Rowe. She signed it by herself. There's nobody got to vouch for it. I don't know if y'all went through it or not, but anyway, it's a tough deal. So what I'm concerned about is that if you do anything with the tax rate, it's got to be fair across the board. It can't be localized to just one group of people. I mean, it would help me. I'd love that. But the problem is, it's got to be nowadays, because of the inflation and because of the increase in taxes of the values of the property, something's got to be done to reduce that, because we can't stand it anymore. Taxpayers, especially, I'm retired on an old soldier's salary, so I'm having a hard time. So what I'd like to do is get a little detail about that. Okay, so the homestead exemption covers about 30,000 people, according to the tax office. They got about 60,000 roughly, single-family homes. That number may be low, but that's what they're saying. So only about half of those would qualify for the homestead exemption. That's what the average is. So, and as I said, that's only about 10% of the population in the county. So, and the other thing about that is the homestead exemption is that that takes it out of your budget now, as soon as you approve it. It's not that, as opposed to the tax rate reduction, that's not reducing anything. That's just saying you can't have more money, but you've got the money that you have now, and you've done all these things with this year, so it's not really going to impinge you if you think about what's going on, if you plan for it, like y'all have to do. So that is an immediate deficit to the budget, wherever it turns out to be. It could be from $700,000 to $2 or $3 million, depending on how much you approve.
Mr. Southern, you're right.
Okay, so I'll try to get this into form in the next.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Mancuso.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, county employees, and citizens of Brazos County. My name's Charles G. Mancuso. I live on Mancuso Road in the county. Family's been out there for about 100 years, so we've been paying taxes like almost forever. Talk about taxes, 2022 taxes, where do we start? We don't need a tax increase. Property values, majority have increased value this year. Some of my property increased 33.5% from last year. It was nice of them to put on this notice, says the difference between your 2017 appraisal and 2022 appraisal value is 40.1%. So something's wrong if the values have increased that much. It doesn't matter if the property's worth a dollar or a million dollars. We need to go out, they need to go out and physically inspect the property to see why did it increase, okay? To me, that's just astronomical. We need a tax cut, since increased values will give all taxing entities more money anyway. So if we get a tax increase, value of goods and property and everything else goes up, so it's naturally going to bring the county, the city, the state, more revenue. Landlords have fixed leases. I'm a landlord. It's going to hurt them, because, you know, not just the taxes going up, repairs go up, costs have skyrocketed, not to mention fuel cost and repairs. We all know that. The county knows that. The city knows it. The citizens know it. You call the plumber, last year you may have paid $100, now you're going to pay 200 or even more, you know? I've got some roofing issues. Roofers is astronomical. It's like, where did this come from? But they know you need it, so they're going to charge you that. Real quick example, I still change oil in my truck. The oil filter's usually $5.99. Now it's $9.99. So instead of the county getting a price, a tax increase, they automatically got it. It almost doubled, you know, from $5.99 to $9.99. So inflation is just making everything get more expensive. We go to eat, the restaurants have to figure the tax increase in. They got to pay more taxes, the cost of goods are more, so it just ends up costing everybody more money for what they're doing. Like I said, it affects everyone. I have a question. It's not a very popular question, but I have a question about why are nonprofits allowed to own and hold vast amounts of real estate worth millions of dollars and pay no taxes? This has to be one of the reasons the city, county, state, and country needs to raise taxes. Nonprofits have prime real estate, okay? Like, we know this used to be a nonprofit building here. I mean, it's a nice building. They own property on the highway, on major roads. They've got real nice places. We should limit them. I mean, I don't know if the county can do it, but they should be limited. Say, you know, nonprofits, X dollars you can hold, but it's hard to compete when you've got nonprofits paying no taxes and we're having to pay more taxes. As I said earlier, a lot of citizens in Brazos County are on fixed incomes. Last year, we may have got $30 monthly increase in our social security. What can you do with 30 bucks? Buy what, five gallons of gas, maybe? If you find it a good price. But we need some help. I asked the judge and commissioners to think what's happening to our economy and how it affects its citizens. It affects everybody, not just us, but everyone. Appreciate what y'all do, and thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last, unless there's anybody else who wants to speak from?
There should be one more form.
Ms. Myers. Mary Myers.
Better not forgive me.
I know. Sorry.
Oh, good morning. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, panel, for letting me come speak. I'm very nervous. I've never done this before, and yet I thought, I stood in front of kids for a number of years as a teacher. Well, I just think of you as students, okay? I'm here before you today.
We'll try not to act like students.
Okay. Well, if you see this happening, you know you are. I almost feel like I should go sit down and just say, "Never mind. My little complaint or request is so minor." But then I tell myself, "Go ahead. Go ahead and let them know the problem." The problem that I have is just me alone. I live on a little road. It's called Mize Road. You may not have heard of it. I have my own road, so that makes me important. It's about three-fourths of a mile long, and it's very peaceful, but there are times when, since it is a dirt road, somebody is in a hurry, somebody's mad. I don't know what his problem is, but he will, meow, down the road, and it just, if there's a south wind at all, and, you know, we have been having a lot of strong south winds, it blows the dust across my yard, across my roof, into my house, and it's been happening for quite a while. I've lived on this road for 62 years, 63 actually. My husband and I, my husband passed away last year, and he kept telling me, "Mary, give it up. Quit fighting with them. They're not going to pay any attention to you." And I said, "No, I'm going to keep trying." All I'm asking is, I don't want it paved. I know that's expensive. I just want a portion in front of my house. I'm selfish, okay? I just, I live right here, and if you Google up Mize Road, you'll see it's between a very nice paved grassber, thank y'all for paving that, and Shirley Road, and so people can go around me. And that was the intent. They would go around me and just leave me alone in my little dust pile there, but no, I'm in a hurry. So Mize Road is a shortcut. Meow! And here they go. Meow! And I want to tell you, I have taken matters into my own hand, and I'm not proud of it. I don't use a gun, but I will not get out there and do that. But I have put up a little sign. I've shown them all the trash that I picked up, and I remind them to please drive slow. They don't even see it. They keep driving. So I get out with the water hose, and I water it down, and by noon, it's dry, and so there's the dust again, but I'm so expensive. And the last thing I have done out of just pure frustration, and I think Judge Peters knows this, I will go out and stand in the road, middle of the road with my broom. I have done this, honestly. I said, "Certainly, they won't run me down." And I stand there, and I hold the broom up, and they go, "What is this?" They do slow down. And I'll do this, and then it works for about an hour, and then they're back to, you know. So I am wondering, can anything be done for the little part of property that I own, which is right about here where the Xs are? This little, you don't have to top the whole road. I'm selfish. I just want it in front of my house. I'm 52 feet from the dirt, and I'd like to live there a few more years, maybe till I die, and y'all could help me out by doing that. So I'm requesting some kind of a topping. I know it's difficult. I know the toppings that you used to use, the old sticky smelly stuff, that I didn't mind, but everybody hated it because it got all over their car. That was good, but now they can't use it anymore. I've even offered to pave it myself and hire a company. I was told you cannot do that. Like, it's my road. No. So please consider, I know you've got so many things and so many problems to face and what you have to do, and I don't envy you a bit, but just consider at some point in time before I'm no longer here, maybe helping me out by paving my road or, excuse me, topping it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And I'm sorry I missed you, but somebody caught me.
I would like you to meet.
We will move on to number three presentation, unless there's some, was there anybody else that wanted to speak? I didn't miss anybody else, I don't think. Hearing none, we'll move to number three presentation and discussion, appreciation of Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension RED program by Linda Riperson.
She's asking you to join.
I don't think they're going to follow me, and I cannot possibly follow Mary. Anyway, I wanted to thank the court and Commissioners and everyone for giving us the opportunity to come in and just let everyone know how much we appreciate our partnership with the Reality Education for Drivers program. It has been a tremendous program for our department. These are some of the Juvenile Services staff who work the program and are there all the time. And then I'm going to introduce you to the other staff that we facilitate together, and it's just been absolutely wonderful. Mary Jo Prince is the program manager. I know probably everybody knows Mary Jo, but I thought she cannot talk today. Cindy Kovar is one of the program managers. Pam Tadera is a program coordinator, and Karina Garcia is also a program coordinator. And so we're very glad to have them, but I want Joel, is going to come up, Joel Hine, and just let you know what this program is and talk about some of our community partnerships that are involved in the program also.
I agree, I won't be able to follow Ms. Myers, but I'll do my best. RED program, what does that mean? It's Reality Education for Drivers program, and this is a program that last fall, our department, Juvenile Services, in partnership with Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension, got together to partner and tailor-fit what they offered for students and drivers that were sent by them. for students and drivers that were sent by the municipal court or JP Court to take this course, to tailor-fit it for justice-involved youth. And so we did that last fall and October. And the program curriculum and speakers directly addressed the effects and the dangers of not wearing seat belts, of driving while under the influence of alcohol, illicit drugs, prescription medications, texting and driving, drowsy driving, and other related road hazards. The program is offered twice annually and is six weeks in length through the use of driving simulators, pedal cars, obstacle courses. Students are able to experience the effects of virtual impairment. And it's really, really interesting to watch the relay races when we do that, because they go through it once sober, and then they put the goggles on that simulate alcohol or marijuana, and they're running all over everything, and it really drives the point home. We also invite parents to attend certain portions of this program. And some of those sessions include a survivors' panel, where we have different speakers from the community come in and share their experiences with driving hazards. And then we have an evening of reflection, which is kind of the highlight of the program. It's a victim impact panel at Callaway Jones Funeral Home. And Callaway Jones has been so good to us, to offer their building. They give us the whole building for that night, and that's really kind of them. So we really appreciate that. And also, different businesses in the community that we don't have a budget for this, so they donate food to us, and we're so grateful for that because we couldn't do it without them. So anyway, it's a great program, high impact. We try to include the whole family. And I just thank these people and also our staff here that work with us to put that on. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
And now I'm gonna ask Cornelius Gray, who is our volunteer coordinator, to just present their certificate to the RED program.
All right. So it reads, "In recognition of a job well done, Juvenile Services would like to recognize Mary Jo Prince, Pam Tadera, Mike Fisher, and Karina Garcia for the dedication to juveniles of Brazos County. They have spent tireless hours working to make sure this program is perfect fit for these juveniles and their families. The compassion for saving lives and caring for others shows through in everything they do. This program has been a tremendous asset to our department and the juveniles and the families we serve. Great job."
I promise I will keep it short. On behalf of our Brazos Valley Injury Prevention Coalition and statewide initiatives and Reality Education for Drivers teams, we'd first like to thank you, Judge Peters, Judge Aldrich Ford Berry and Colley, for this opportunity to spotlight our commitment to saving young lives. Thanks to our community partners, the Brazos County Juvenile Justice Center team for making this presentation possible, a team that shares our passion for giving our community's youth the opportunities to not only live safer lives, but more productive and fulfilling lives. I'd also like to acknowledge some of our community partners and those who have supported our program that are here today, including Sheriff Dickey, his chief deputies Stewart and Martinez, Judge Hill, and Judge Elliott, who are ambassadors of our program. We also thank the Texas Department of Transportation for their generous support in allowing us to deliver our programs statewide at no cost to any of the citizens of Texas. On a personal note, I'd like to give a sincere thanks to my colleagues and coworkers, who I have the privilege of working with every day, all with a common cause and commitment to saving lives. Like you, sometimes we wonder, does what we do make a difference? Are we really reaching the lives of the people that we care about so intensely? And I found a quote that kind of, I think, brought it together, and I hope you will share, that we thank you as commissioners for what you do for our county, but especially when it comes to children. Quote, "The difference you make today might not show up for years, might not make you rich or famous, might not get you glory or cheers, but the difference will live forever. It will be passed on into the wild, because the difference you make in the world today will be in the heart of a child." Thank you for making a difference and for allowing us to share.
Thank you.
Sure. Come on up.
Come on down.
Yeah, move on down.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on and consider to take action on Agenda items four through 37. Number four is approval to accept $500 donation placed in the Brazos County Sheriff's Office Crime Fund.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number five is a request for approval of the IT Department for Payment Organisation to Frontier Communications in the amount of $11,054.01. The work was performed last week, the last week of September, but the unforced was not received until April 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number six is a request from the county attorney to purchase a front and back visor lights for two replacement vehicles in the amount of $742.38 to be taken from the capital improvement fund.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number seven is a request to order vehicles for the FY 22-23 fiscal year list provided by the fleet director, and based on wear and tear and mileage, placing the order now increases the likelihood of delivery next spring. Assignment of new vehicles would be discussed during budget workshops in June, July 2022. Estimates are $133,080, more than discussed in April workshop due to adding in the road and bridge trucks. Delivery of trucks now also requires ordering in June for next spring arrival.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eight, approval of amendment number one, 20-101, mowing and county right-of-way for Brazos County to increase fence mowing per mile and fields per acre for 90 days due to increased fuel costs.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is approval of change order number three, CIP 20-580, jail kitchen expansion in the amount of $242,899 for additional work. The new contract amount will be $4,518,809.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion.
Judge, I was gonna say, it's my belief that a part of this additional work was actually, whenever they were going to add sewer service to an existing line, that that line was damaged. So they basically had to go seven foot underneath the slab. I think this is a good expenditure.
Yeah, I agree. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 10 is approval of amendment number one to contract 22-012-R, grit trap pumping with G&amp;L Waste Water Services LLC to amend workers' compensation, insurance, and employees' liability laws on the current contract.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is approval of amendment number one, 22-118, line striping and pavement markers for Brazos County to add pricing to preform legend for 35 and mile per hour as quoted.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 13 is award RFQ number 20-101, engineering services recommended award or Dudley Engineering LLC Geotech Construction Material, curse surveying.
Wait, I think we're on.
Did I miss one? I'm sorry.
Item.
Okay. Number 12 is award of RFQ 22-100 appraisal services recommended awards ST Lovett and Associates.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number opposed? None motion carries. Number 13 is award of RFQ 22-101, engineering services recommended awards Dudley Engineering LLC Geotech and Construction Material Testing, Curse Surveying, and Goodwin Laster Inc., DBA Goodwin Laster Strong. And I think we want to take those individually and vote on each one of them individually. So first would be Dudley Engineering LLC for geotechnical and construction material testing.
Move approval.
Oh, thank you. Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number, the second part would be curse surveying for surveying.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to.
Judge, I just wanted to make a comment, that I actually had talked to our purchasing department to see if it would be possible to do a rotation list on that. And the county actually is under different guidelines than cities are. I believe that this is probably the best way to do that contract.
Okay, I agree. Any further discussion?
Do we need to move approval of Goodwin Laster?
No, we got a vote on the curse surveying. That we were having discussed.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. So curse surveying passes. Goodwin Laster Inc., DBA Goodwin Laster Strong Civil Engineer.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion.
Judge, I need to recuse myself from the engineering contract.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Number 14 is approval of the following committee for evaluation proposals for RFP 22-123 Benefits Consultant.
Move approval. A through G.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve A through G. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 15 is permission to advertise RFP 22-123 Benefits Consultant.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 16 is permission to advertise 22-130 Temporary Employment Services.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 17 is approval of renewal bid contract 22-131-R, Hydra Malt Seeding of Brazos County Right Of Ways with Britten Hydra Seeding.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 18 is approval of the following committee for the evaluation proposal of RFP CIP 22-640, Brazos County Road and Bridge Scour Repair.
Move approval. A through F.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 19 is permission to advertise RFP CIP 22-640, Brazos County Bridge Scour Repair.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 20 is approval of the following committee for the evaluation proposal of the RFP CIP 22-641 Replacement of Various Roofs Phase Five JP Constable Three Juvenile Detention Center Portable.
Move approval. A through H.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 21 is permission to advertise for bid for RFP CIP 22-641 Replacement of Various Roofs Phase Five JP Constable Three Juvenile Detention Center Portable.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 22 is approval of the following committee for evaluation proposal for RFP CIP 22-643, Jack Manning Bridge Replacement. And that committee would be the same committee that's number 18.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded to approve A through F that comes from 18.
Right.
All in... Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 23 is permission to advertise RFP CIP 22-643, Jack Manning Bridge Replacement.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 24 is approval of agreement 23-001 for use of subscription material with Lex Poe for Constable Precinct Two.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 25 is approval of renewal of bid contract 23-003-R, Solid Waste Hauling Recycling Citizen Collection Site Trash Pickup with Texas Commercial Waste.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 26, consider and take action on the Wixon Creek Special Utility District Utility Permit to construct road board for a two-inch waterline crossing under High Lonesome Road. Address is 3792, site located Precinct Two.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 27 is consider and take action on Wixon Creek Special Utility District Utility Permit to construct road board for a 12-inch waterline crossing under Harris Lane. The address is 775, site located Precinct Two.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 28 is consider and take action on Wixon Creek Special Utility District Utility Permit to construct road board for a two-inch waterline crossing under Harris Lane. The address is 8473, site located Precinct Two.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 19, I mean, number 29 is consider and take action on Wixon Creek Special Utility District Utility Permit to construct a road board for a 12-inch waterline crossing under Harris Lane. The address is 8856, site located Precinct Two.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 30 is approval of Treasury Report for February 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 31 is approval of expenditure journal entry for Brazos County's FY 21-22, third quarter cash contribution of $119,507.25 to the Brazos County Health District.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? None motion carries. Number 32 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval, A through I.
L.
Oh, A through L.
Second.
Corrected.
And then, then there's payments in there.
And payments, M through O.
Correct. Motion made seconded to approve total of A through O. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 33 is budget amendments, budget amendments FY 21/22, 31.1 through 31.5.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 34 is personnel change status.
Move approval, A and B.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 35 is payment of claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 811-5092 through claim number 811-5323, and claims number 9004845 through claim number 9004939.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. We will skip down to number 38, and acknowledgment of investment report for quarter ending 3/31/22. Number 39 is acknowledgment of FY 2021/2022 budget to actuals by funds as of May 11, 2022. Number 40 is juvenile director's report on detention population. Linda.
Judge and commissioners, we have 40 juveniles in detention, 32 males, eight females, seven in our medical isolation rooms just for protocol, and 30 on electronic monitor.
Would you repeat that one more time for me?
I'm sorry.
You said 42 youths.
Forty with forty.
Four zero.
Four zero, yes.
Oh, okay.
Thirty-two males and eight females.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Forty-one, sheriff's report on inmate population. Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. We have 600 in custody this morning. That's 512 men, 88 women. We got 66 on electronic monitoring with seven pending.
Okay. Thank you. Sure. Forty-two is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics. Hearing none. Forty-three is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Charles, come on up.
I'm going to move it kind of slow. I'm glad Ms. Mize is still here. My name's Charles G. Mancuso on Mancuso Road. I was thinking earlier about five or six years ago, a guy has an auto restoration place on Mancuso Road. He's got a big old ugly sign that's in the barge ditch. It's still there, been there for about a year. They actually filmed a dragster on Mancuso Road doing a burnout going down Mancuso Road. It was on Facebook and YouTube. So, like I said, that happened. It was there. It's been documented, but things happen. Another thing, real quick, I want to thank law enforcement and first responders for what they do for us. We need to give them better training. We need to give them better equipment, and we need to take care of them. And we need more people. We need to hire them and get the funds available. Another thing, we need a 24/7 environmental officer, a 24/7 animal livestock officer. The people in the county know, they know when the environmental officers don't work. They burn all kinds of garbage and trash. They get it from the city, they bring it into the county to burn, because they don't have to go pay to dump it. Okay? They're usually south of me, I'm sorry, they're usually, yeah, south of me, and the wind blows towards me, and I smell it, it's horrible and everything. The livestock officers are the same way. They know exactly when they work. And things happen during that time also. We know crime happens 24/7. Criminals know when the law enforcement is off. As I mentioned, illegal burning, we have loud music, we have guns that are being fired on two-acre tracks. I know fireworks are legal in the county, but even after the holidays, they're still shooting fireworks. Believe it or not, I've got a beautiful pasture with cows in it, and the neighbors across the street feel like it's like a firing range or something, so they shoot their fireworks over on my property. I don't want my cows eating that. So, there's documentation of all of this, but, you know, we've got to have some control of it. Let people know that loud music might be good for a little bit, but, you know, 10:00, 11:00 midnight at night, you know? And the thing too, it's not my kind of music. If it was from the 60s or 70s, I'd say maybe turn it up a little bit, you know, some good Creedence or Beach Boys or something, but what they play, I don't understand. But I appreciate what y'all do for us and the time y'all take, and I know it's a lot of hard decisions, but I appreciate what y'all do. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Come on up, Mike.
Mike Sutherland, my joke took all the time. Anyway, on the tax rate reduction, the benefits would go to all the taxpayers, and that means renters, businesses, everybody in town that pays taxes, and some people pay taxes to other people because of the rent going up and that kind of thing. So, there's a tremendous benefit to that, and the economic development, too. If you reduce their taxes, it makes us more attractive, the area is more attractive. And in terms of the budget, the tax reduction, the tax reduction rate does not impact the current budget, which is operating in the county wonderfully, so you may not need the rest of that money to take anyway. So, thank you very much. Appreciate all y'all do.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other citizen input and our concerns? Hearing none. We will go back up to number 36 and convene an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.0725 to deliberate business and financial issues related to a contract being negotiated.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I'm Ed Bull. In my capacity as legal officer, I already tendered an opinion to Cheryl Kaufman. I'd ask the court, take a vote, it can be unanimous before we go into executive session, finding that it would be detrimental to the court's and the county's position in negotiating this contract with this third party.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Most passes. And it is 10:53.
Judge, would you like to read who's joining the meeting?
Oh, sorry. Mistress Cheryl. Ed. Who else do we need in there besides the attorneys? Okay.
I'm good. Mike, carry you.
Hey. We have my tummy sandwich. I'm not.
All ready? Okay, we're coming out of executive session. It's 11:23. There's no action to be taken. The next item is to adjourn. Thank y'all.